Twenty-first, Mr. Glover, are you with us on the telephone?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So all of our council is present. We're going to begin our meeting with an invocation that will be led by Pastor David Cottle of the First Church of the Nazarene. And so we invite everyone to stand for the opening prayer, after which I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we acknowledge your presence here and want to say to you that you are welcome here also. We are grateful for your loving kindness, for your faithfulness to us and your goodness to us. We count ourselves among a blessed people. We are grateful for these men and women who have made themselves available to serve you and to serve us in this city. And we ask tonight for your wisdom and guidance to be given to them. May your blessing rest upon them. Grant them the wisdom and the guidance that they need in the decisions that we will make in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is awards and recognitions. I'd like to turn the time over to Vice Mayor Luna to present a recognition of the Falcon Squadron of the Civil Air Patrol.
I'm wondering if Dr. Ditch is here. Oops. Dr. Ditch, are you here?
He's not here this evening. He's back east teaching.
Oh, is there somebody here to... Okay, why don't you come forward? So I want to go ahead and highlight this. Dr. Ditch, as well as the Civil Air Patrol Falcon Field, they just received the Arizona Wings Squadron of the Year for 2017. And what that means is they're the number-one CAP squadron in the state of Arizona out of 22 squadrons ranging across the entire state. The award was given to the squadron at the Wings Award Banquet held in Tucson on May 12th. In addition to that award, the squadron members have been selected for 11 out of 16 Wing Individual Members of the Year Awards. This is truly unheard of. That means that 11 members of the Falcon Squadron will take away Person of the Year Awards in 11 out of the 16 categories, competing with over 1,200 members from across the state, which is truly unprecedented. Three other members have also received three six-state regional awards and are now in competition for the national level awards. Congratulations. Do you want to go up and take it?
Yes. Congratulations. You've got a great delegation. Why don't we... Can we have everyone come up and join us for the photo?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
A lot of effort by the members.
I can tell. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna smile at that gentleman with the camera back there. Why don't we... Everybody come in and let's fill in around the podium. Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right. Thank you. Let's all smile at Randy with the camera. Thanks again and congratulations. Thank you very much.
He's gonna tell with the cellular...
Oh, wonderful.
Good evening. Just real quickly, what the Civil Air Patrol is, is we provide emergency services as far as search and rescue, disaster assistance to multiple federal and state agencies on their request. Additionally, we have a very robust cadet program that is probably second to none as far as creating leaders for our country. And then we also are charged with aerospace education through Congress. And it's a very active... It's a completely volunteer citizens serving the citizens. So it's a very honorable to be part of that. So, short and sweet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the recognition.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on our agenda is to conduct a public hearing... Oh, I'm sorry, it's to consider the consent agenda. And I do have several requests to speak, and I want to make sure that we take the cases off the consent agenda that need to come off. We do have a couple of zoning cases. So Beverly, I know you're here on item zoning case 180624, which I believe is Agenda Item Number Eight. So that case will be removed from the consent agenda. And the other zoning case you want to speak on is 6B0564. I'm having trouble locating that one on the agenda. Beverly, are you here to speak about two different zoning...
It was 24. It's the Heritage Crossing Single Resident.
So you're here to speak on two different zoning cases?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wanted to try to take both of them off the consent agenda. So I know the first is Number Eight. So that will be off... There's an 8A and an 8B.
It's A.
Okay, you want to take Agenda Item 8A off the consent, is that correct? And what's the other agenda item that you want to speak on?
I think you mentioned it. It's on 180564?
That's the case that we had just talked about. 180624?
That's the medical unit, yeah.
Okay, we have two cards, and so far I've only identified one zoning case.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I put the same number on both of them?
No. You have 6Bs... Well, I won't get into it, but...
Okay. Whatever.
Well, I need to... We don't want to pass the item and then hear from you later.
Okay, well, what about... What number do you have for the medical unit?
Six B.
6B.
Okay, great. So we have got 8A and 6B.
6B and 8A.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll pull Agenda Items 6A and 6B and invite Beverly to speak on those. The other requests to speak are all on items that are currently off the consent agenda. Just for those of you, I know there was another zoning case that attracted a lot of emails relative to a housing development near the airport. That is... If you are here to speak on Agenda Item 10, that item is on the consent agenda to be continued until June the 18th. So if you are here to speak on that item, we'd invite you to come back on June 18th because that's when we will be conducting that hearing if it hasn't been resolved. Does that make sense? All right. Well, with that... With those caveats is... Randy, are you reading the consent agenda today? Welcome, Randy Polkhar up to read the consent agenda.
I'll be playing the role of Kevin Christopher this evening. So I just want to confirm it was 6B and 8A? Jim?
Correct. And Agnes, we don't have any other requests to speak, is that correct? Okay. Anybody here to speak on an item that we haven't talked about? Yeah, you're under Items from Citizens Present at the End. Is that okay? All right. Thank you.
All right. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, a blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Sartoma Club, one-day event Wednesday, July 4th at the Mesa Convention Center, 263 North Center Street. Item 3B through 3G, act on liquor license applications for Safeway stores at 325 South Power Road, 1951 West Baseline Road, 9243 East Baseline Road, 441 North Val Vista Drive, and 2727 North Power Road. Item 3H, act on liquor license application for Beast of Bourbon, 2235 South Power Road. Item 3I, act on liquor license application for Chipotle Mexican Grill, 1229 East McAlips Road. Item 3J, act on liquor license application for Raging Bull, 155 South Power Road. Item 4A, act on contract to purchase to reconfigure planning and permit services workspaces for the Development Services Department. Item 4B, act on three-year term contract for painting services for the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department. Item 4C, act on one-year renewal to the term contract for Motorola radio parts, accessories, and services as requested by the Communications Department. Item 4D, act on contract to purchase two replacement applied biosystem genetic analyzers for the Police Department. This purchase is funded by a National Institute of Justice 2016 and 2017 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Grant and by Forensic Services Crime Lab Assessment Funds. Item 4E, act on contract to purchase one replacement heavy-duty rear-loading refuse truck for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. Item 4F, act on contract to purchase two replacement CNG-powered, heavy-duty front-loading refuse trucks for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. Item 4G, act on three-year term contract for pipe parts for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for citywide use. Item 4H, act on three-year term contract for metal products for the Water and Wastewater Treatment Plants as requested by the Water Resources Department. Item 4I, act on one-year renewal to the term contract for deep well and well pump maintenance and repair services for the Water Resources Department. Item 4J, act on contract to purchase one milling machine and engine lathe for the new Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant as requested by the Water Resources Department. Item 4K, act on re-award of the three-year term contract for liquid oxygen and various gases for the new Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant as requested by the Water Resources Department. Item 5A, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Bloom Development to the Tahoma Autumn Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5B, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Child Crisis Arizona to the Tahoma Autumn Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5C, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by East Valley Adult Resources to the Tahoma Autumn Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5D, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Furnishing Dignity to the Tahoma Autumn Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5E, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Gene Lewis Boxing Club to the Tahoma Autumn Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5F, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Nabyan Foundation to the Tahoma Autumn Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5G, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Valley of the Sun YMCA to the Tahoma Autumn Nation and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5H, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Bloom Development to the Auction Indian Community and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5I, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Furnishing Dignity to the Auction Indian Community and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5J, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Gene Lewis Boxing Club to the Auction Indian Community and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5K, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to accept, expend, and distribute grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Continuum of Care Shelter Plus Care Grant to provide rental assistance, supportive services, and related administrative services to disabled families experiencing homelessness. Item 5L, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Lincoln Property Company Commercial Incorporated and Harvard Investments Incorporated for a phased office campus development of city-owned property located near the northwest corner of West Rio Solado Parkway and North Dobson Road adjacent to Riverview Park. Item 5M, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Arts and Cultural Department. Item 5N, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Business Services Department. Item 5O, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the City Clerk's Office. Item 5P, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Development Services Department. Item 5Q, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Engineering Department. Item 5R, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 5S, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Police Department City Prosecutor. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 18-00056 to 4,300 through 4,400 blocks of East Florian Avenue, located north of Southern Avenue and west of Greenfield Road, modification of an existing planned area development and site plan review to allow for development of an office building. Item 6B has been removed from consent. Item 6C, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 18-00169, the 8,200 to 8,400 blocks of East Baseline Road, located west of Haas Road and on the north side of Baseline, modification of an existing planned area development to allow for the reduction of interior garage dimensions. Item 6D, introduction of ordinance amending Title 11, Sections 11-19-1, 11-19-2, 11-19-3, and 11-19-5 of the Mesa zoning ordinance to make minor updates to the airfield overlay district, including updating the purpose statement, replacing the airfield map, and revising definitions. Item 7A, act on resolution declaring certain documents filed with the city clerk and entitled land use restrictions in the airfield overflight areas, amendments to the land use regulations tables at Section 2 in each of Chapters 4, 5, 6, 7, and 10 of Title 11, the Mesa zoning ordinance, to be a public record in providing availability of the documents for public use and inspection. Item 7B, introduction of ordinance amending the land use regulations tables in the airfield overflight areas in Title 11 Mesa zoning ordinance, Section 2 of Chapters 4, 5, 6, 7, and 10. Item 8A has been removed from consent. Item 8B, act on subdivision plat... Map of dedication for South Channing, the 1,700 to 1,900 blocks of South Channing located on the north side of Baseline Road west of the 202 Santan Freeway. Items 10A, 10B, 10C, 10D, and 10E involving an annexation, comparable zoning, minor general plan amendment, and rezoning of property for the development of a master-planned community generally located at East Williamsfield Road on the south side and South Signal Butte Road on both sides are for continuance to the June 18th, 2018 City Council Meeting. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Randy. We haven't added any additional cards filed to take an item off the consent agenda, is that correct? Okay, there's been a motion made by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your votes. Mr. Glover, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. The vote is unanimous in favor of the consent agenda. The first item that we have on our agenda that is not on the consent agenda is Item 6B. This is a zoning case. This is zoning case 18-061. It's the 7,600 block of East Baseline Road, south side, and the east side of South Sausman Road, located at the southwest corner of Sausman Road and Baseline Road. We have a request to speak from Beverly... Is it Selvage?
Yes.
Thank you, Beverly. Welcome. You have three minutes to tell us what you want us to know about this.
I hope I can get it together in that time. Mayor and councilman, thank you for hearing me. The thing is, I haven't seen any plans on this. Somehow or another, our HOA decided not to tell anybody, and I found out through another neighborhood. And of course, it's right next to our Sunland Village East, where I live, a retirement community. Then the... So I haven't seen any plans at all. I saw something on the website. I called, and one of the planning departments told me where to look and walked me through. And the thing that I was really concerned about most, it's kind of a weird-shaped lot, but on Baseline and Sausman, at that corner, we have more accidents than you can believe. And not too many months ago, two people were killed. Now, I don't remember if there have been any others. I've been living there for 23 years. So when you go south on Sausman Road and you turn left going east on Baseline, people don't take that first lane. They always take the second lane, at least 95% do. But I always thought it was the rule that you took the nearest one to your turn. So if they have an egress and an egress on Baseline to that property and not seeing the plans, I don't know. But that would be kind of an iffy thing. Also, they're gonna... The one on Sausman, probably not too bad, except that I've been trying to get another lane going north on Sausman for years, but evidently it's under the Canal District. There's only one lane there. So anyway, but that property is right next to the canal. Anyway, it would be, you know, be nice to have, see a landscape and so on. I'd like to have seen plans. I guess there was a public meeting also that was canceled because of no interest. So I was very disappointed that I didn't know. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming and sharing your concerns, Beverly. Mr. Wesley, does this project include ingress egress off of Baseline? Is there any of the issues that she raised a moment ago, was that discussed in the planning and zoning hearing or any of the discussions you've had?
Mayor and council, yes, the site plan is right at the southeast corner of Baseline at Sausman Road. It's a two-story medical office building on an oddly-shaped parcel. It's gonna be interesting to see it actually get developed. It does include driveway access from both Baseline and Sausman. It's been through the full review process by city staff over a number of months. It has included input from transportation and engineering, so they've seen those driveways and those driveway locations. They have not expressed any concern about them.
Mayor, this is for introduction. So we... But we'll be glad to meet with the speaker. And I would agree with her, this is a very awkward corner that's been vacant for years. And so I think we will take more... We'll review this again, but we'll... This is just for introduction, so we'll, between now and the next time, we'll take the opportunity to... Sorry, sue me with you and show you the site plan so you can get comfortable with it. But I agree with you, this is a very challenging spot, location with the canal behind it and right there on the corner, so... But we'll visit with you and we'll have our traffic engineers look at it.
Beverly, you know, I always have people, whenever you have issues, I always ask that you reach out. And then we sit down, we talk to the developers, and make sure that your issues are addressed. It'll be no different on this one. I want to make sure that your issues are addressed. Doesn't mean we're gonna stop development, but I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with what we're doing. We've done it before. We'll continue to meet and do that. So right now, this one's off consent, so I'm gonna make a motion that we put it on consent and move this forward. Make a motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a... Thank you.
And I'll just clarify, mayor and councilmember, it's a motion to introduce the ordinance and setting June 4th, 2018, as the date for the public hearing on that ordinance for Agenda Item 6B.
So Beverly, I hope you understand what's happening. On June the 4th, we're gonna have another meeting, and that's where we'll make the final vote on this. So you have a couple of weeks to learn more about this and then come back on June the 4th and express your lack of approval with going forward.
So Beverly, after the meeting, meet with Mr. Wesley. Mr. Wesley, right here, wave. So Mr. Wesley will give you his contact information. We'll get plans to you and as well as the developers so that you can sit down with them and get your issues addressed.
Thank you. Any additional discussion, council? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Mr. Glover, how do you vote? Thank you. Vote is unanimous in favor of setting June the 4th as the date of the public hearing on this zoning case. The next item... No, that was on the consent. The next item that was taken off the consent, Beverly, is also you, Item 8A. This is the Heritage Crossing Subdivision Plat. This is the 8,200 to 8,400 blocks of East Baseline Road.
Yes. The thing that concerns me is that there's been so much development in that area, and we have the 318 apartments and now the houses. And I think there's what, 197 or 198 houses going in there? And thank you very much for putting in the signal light on Haas, which you were not going to do, except that we did have a meeting at our village, and they said that they would put it in, and you did. Thank you. The thing that worries me is that all of these developments, plus you've got the houses that are right next to that, plus you've got the condos up the way, and there was an additional 30 condos that were just approved. They're all multifamily. So my main concern is where are these kids gonna play, particularly the older... The older kids, not the little ones that go out and like ride their tricycles. But the only park that we have in that area is a little kiddie park, kind of like on Haas, which is kind of ridiculous. But there's property in the corner of 60 and 202 that has not... That I've been aware of, been brought up for development yet. It would make a nice park. I don't know how the city would manage that, but it would be kind of nice. Because I can't see the kids crossing that. I can't even imagine the traffic and for us older people coming out of the... Onto Baseline. But also coming on Baseline as you come down from the east going west on Baseline, like you've been shopping at Albertson's, and you're coming down and you want to make a left-hand turn into our facility. Sometimes it's very, very hard with the traffic, even now. So in the future, there should be a left-hand turn there. So also, you know, about the road on Sausman, another lane. Will that ever happen, I wonder? Seems like we're... It seems like we've been kind of forgotten and become like a dumping part of the city of which nobody else wants in Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Beverly, I'm not sure... What we're approving tonight is a subdivision plat for single-family homes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not a multifamily project?
No, but it's for children. There will be children there.
Sure.
197 homes, plus the homes that are already there, plus the condos that are down the street, plus 318 apartments, and they're multifamily. So... And now we haven't even thought about on the other side, on the east side of 202. Thank you.
You obviously are very familiar with what this is. I just want to make sure you knew we're talking single-family homes, not multifamily.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Wesley, any of the concerns that were raised by Beverly, were they discussed in the planning and zoning hearings on this matter?
Mayor and councilmembers, certainly back at the site plan stage and the zoning stage, those types of things were discussed. And the development does include open space areas for the residents to provide some of that internal park space. I think does address some of our concerns. And again, through the review processes, transportation looks at those different impacts and the improvements that are being made to the streets and the intersections there should help with the traffic. At this point, we're to the final plat stage, as you noted, which is a pretty routine and final stage of the overall development process.
Mayor, council, we have a fairly large new park at Haas and Medina, so it's a brand-new, fully-equipped park, so it's not too far from the site. So that's a great park that's getting a lot of utilization. So we would invite everyone to come use that park. I don't think it gets overutilized right now.
Thank you.
I was gonna mention the same thing, Mr. Brady, that, you know, we just opened the park three and a half years ago, three years ago, and it's not a kiddie park. It's a very large park, a lot of green space, a lot of activities for all ages. Beverly, to address some of your concerns, you know, the development that's going in right across the street from your residence is something that I think was worked on for several years before it came in. I think the Baptist Church had a piece of their parking lot that they were upside down. They wanted to sell some of their property. Developer bought it and developed it. They have shared amenities because it's the same person that's building next door. So there are some shared amenities between the two, swimming pool, green space, different things inside there for the little ones and for the older kids as well. To address your issue with the light at Farnsworth and Baseline, we are in this budget. We are putting in money to put a turn signal with the box in there as well. So your concerns are being addressed, especially going in, because you're not the only person I've heard from about the left turn off of Baseline. So we're working on that. We just... It costs a lot of money to put those turn signals in, and it's in our... It's gonna be in this upcoming budget to do that specifically for your development. So with that, again, I would like to make the motion that we move this forward and take the vote.
Thank you. Please make that motion electronically, and let's see if somebody seconds it. Thank you, Mr. Luna has seconded it. Council, any additional discussion on this item? All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Please cast your vote. Mr. Glover, how do you vote? Thank you. Vote is unanimous in favor of approval. The next item on our agenda is Item 9A. That's to conduct a public hearing relating to the annual assessments of the Mesa Town Center Improvement District, number 228. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Goodwin, do we have any requests to speak on this item? Thank you, council. Anyone on the council want to address this item? Mr. Glover? Mr. Glover?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then I declare the public hearing closed. The next item on our agenda is item 9B, which is adopting a resolution approving the 2018 district assessment for the Mesa Town Center Improvement District, number 228. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? There is, made by Mr. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Luna. Please cast your vote. Mr. Glover, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. The vote is unanimous in favor of approving Agenda Item 9B. The next item on our agenda is item 11A, that is to conduct a public hearing on items 11B through 11F for ordinances adopting modified city-owned utility terms, rates, fees, and charges for the electric, natural, gas, water, wastewater, and solid waste utilities. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Goodwin, I do have some cards that you've handed to me previously on this item, have you received any additional cards? All right, so I have three requests to speak on Agenda Items, and we're going to combine these for purposes of the hearing, Agenda Items 11B through F. So we'll hear from, from these three folks, we'll see what part of that agenda they want to speak on. First person I will invite forward, I apologize if I mispronounce your name, David A. Douthat?
Douthat?
I'm sorry?
D O U T H I T?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Ah, we got it.
I'm sorry, Mr. David, help me pronounce, please step to the, to the microphone.
It's Douthat, D O U T H I T. I'm David A. Douthat, and I'm from 623 South Winthrop. And I have gotten late to this little party, and I just want to express some serious concerns about this. I have a serious concern that this may somehow end up being a backdoor funding mechanism for $75 million in bonds because, that were issued for the ASU. They haven't been issued yet, but they've been approved. But the problem is, as far as I understand, your projected paying for this was on expanding tax base and expanding utility base based on the economy growing, and I have a serious doubts about that going to happen. And if that occurs, then we're going to end up with a backdoor funding of over $100 million total debt because of this bonding issue. And it will also involve some, some sales tax problems, too. So that's my primary concern with all this, is that we may end up sliding into the back way, back way to get this stuff covered. Anybody else?
Thank you, David.
Yeah.
The next request to speak is from Jen Duff. Jen, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Jen Duff, 146 West Second Street. On behalf of the utility rate increases, you know, earlier this year, we had a debate about ASU and public safety. And they were not related, we separated, we made a decision about public safety, and there's going to be a quarter percent sales tax increase on the ballot. And so that was dealt with separately. Now we're looking at utility rate increases and again, pulling in ASU, ASU versus utility tax increases. Again, I plead with you to separate these cases and debate them separately. The, the utility rate increases were projected before ASU was a thought. The increase was projected to offset, to pay for the, the debt service on the 2014 bonds. So to tie it into ASU, when the rate increase was already projected well before ASU, I think we, again, I plead with you to decide on the utility rates based on, purely on the utility rates, and ASU will debate that when it's on the agenda. And not to confuse the two, I think a vote against the utility rate increases is a vote against paying for the infrastructure that we've already been building. So I have a great concern about that and to plead to debate these issues separately. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. The other card that I had, did not wish to speak, but just expressed support for the Agenda Item. Do we have any council members that want to address this item? Mr. Thompson?
You know, I, I'm specific to, I'm not talking about ASU in this, in this, in my thought process here, but, but strictly going, again, I go back to what I said last week or the week before in study session, where, you know, we, we've gotten letters from members of our community. I've gotten messages on Facebook where I've seen the chatter, the discussions on Facebook when they talk about our utility rates and specifically our water rates and how high they are and how they feel there must be, you know, I must have a leak somewhere in my, on my service lines because my water bill is astronomical and it's only my wife and I living here. I go back again and say, you know, when we came up with the water rates, the previous council, and this goes back probably two or three years, when we came up with the water rates, we did it specifically so that we could encourage water conservation. And I don't think at the time we had the foresight to see what it was going to do going forward to our citizens and what it was going to mean to them and their pocketbooks. And I know that last time I had made a motion to try to, to take a zero increase on our rates across the board to allow our, our citizens an opportunity to take a breath, put some money in their pocket, save a little bit. I know that we were overruled, but then there was also a motion made to accept the current, the rates as they were proposed, and had barely won on a 4-3 vote. So it tells me that we're not, as a council, we're not completely on board with where we need to be on our rates. It's somewhere between 0 and 3.2 or 3.5 percent. And I think we ought to sit back down and have another discussion on this and determine what we want to do with our rates so that we're making it so that economical for our citizens, so that we're not hitting them in their pocketbooks, so that we're giving them some relief, not punishing them for using the utilities of the city. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Mr. Whitaker?
Two reasons why I'm opposing the utility rate increase. I think I beat the dead horse enough on the ASU thing, so I'll just summarize the reason why I think it's a bad idea. The ASU building is $120 million to the taxpayer. Despite what anyone says, the cost per customer is as follows this year. To the electric customer, $466,860. To the gas customer, $557,961. To the wastewater customer, $1.1 million. And to the water customer, $3.8 million. This is, this debt obligation that we have is roughly 25% of our general fund debt. To put things in perspective of how big $120 million is. The deception in the cost is that we've overanalyzed how to, how much to make our first payment out of 20. A 20-year debt bond requires 20 payment, 20 payments, which is the majority coming on the backs of our water customers. Our budget office only recognizes the first five years of how we pay for this. The first five payments of $120 million debt obligation still leaves $90 million unaccounted for, money that future councils will have to find, more than likely through a sales tax increase or a utility rate increase. The second reason is more of a fundamental reason. I believe that water is a basic right for your citizens, and when the water rates become too expensive, that's one of our core things that we need to be watching out for, is a city. So over the last 10 years, we've roughly compounded our water rates at 4.22 percent. This inevitably becomes unaffordable. It's unfortunate that we're using one of the most powerful forces, compounding interest against our water customers and the middle class that struggles to survive. Our water rates are the most expensive amongst our peers in Arizona. So with that being said, those are the two reasons why I'm opposing the utility rate increase.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Brady, this question's for you. If we did not do a utility rate increase, which we've suggested at 2%, if we not do that, what would be the analysis for the following year? If you could break it down?
Yeah, I think, and maybe Candace can help me, we would actually have to pay, we'd have to increase the rate for next year. Because we're all, all this is anticipating the growing cost of the debt service to pay off the very large water treatment plants and wastewater treatment plants that are under construction, ready to be delivered. And so that's a couple hundred million dollars worth of facilities that generate tremendous amount of opportunities, and that's what we're seeing. So this idea that current ratepayers are paying for it, actually what's happening is they're paying for the debt service on these big, large facilities, 200-plus million dollars worth. And as a result, we're seeing unprecedented growth in those areas that are serviced by these facilities. So, but, and so what happens is that debt continues to grow each year, and the purpose of the rate increases were to anticipate that additional debt service, and only at 2% this year. But if we don't do the 2%, we still have to make a debt payment next year, which is going to grow, and it continues to grow by a couple million dollars, and I think one year it grows by $6 million in the next couple of years. So we're trying to gradually increase the rates to meet that debt service without having to do large increases from one year to the next. Now, as you saw, as the Council recognized this year, we had originally anticipated a 3.5% increase, but because of higher-than-expected growth or revenues to our fund, which was a result of growth, as well as being able to reduce cost, both on the operations side as well as on our financing side, we were able to reduce the rate down to 2%. We'll look at that every year, remind the Council, you're only approving for next year's rates, you're not making any commitments beyond that. Every year we'll review the rates and keep those at a minimum.
Thank you. I mean, in reality, we could not raise the rates this year.
Sure.
Yet we would have to pay...
Next year, you may have to increase it by double the amount or some 4% or something. We, again, we'd have to see. It's just that we have to keep making that, those debt payments continue to grow on us.
How would that affect our reserve fund?
Well, we maintain our reserve fund. All these rates are based on the assumption that in the five-year forecast period, we remain, we maintain a fund balance of about 8%.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but as monies come in and we have bond debt that's payable, we set monies aside sort of like an escrow account to pay off that bond debt as, as it approaches?
Well, we, yes, we see that we have, we have the schedule of debt, obviously for the next 20 years, and we put that inside of all the other expenses related to the utilities. And that's one of the biggest drivers as far as what's actually increasing each year from year to year. That's anticipated, and that's built into our growth and the rates to be able to, to be able to adjust our revenues to cover that debt service.
I think, one last question. Thank you, Ms. Duff, for bringing up separation of the two. You know, I, I think of the building of building, regardless of who leases it, we haven't even come to the point where we know what, what that building costs today. So until that building costs, we have not even decided the funding mechanism for, for that or whether we're going to build it or not. So that's a future discussion so that the public knows. And I, I stand that we, we do development in our city every day, all the time, and this infrastructure is, the infrastructure that we have is crucial to our building, just like we approved Lincoln Properties at Riverview. That's a 400, a proposed $430 million project, 750 to 1.3 million square feet of Class A office space, that's extremely important. As we collect revenue from the utilities, yes, that utility money will go into our enterprise fund, and then it'll be transferred to our general fund and offset our public safety costs. So I'll say it right here, I'm all about increasing our, you have to be careful how I say it, because people are listening. But I'm all about increasing our infrastructure and what we can do to create utility monies for our general bonds and to pay them off timely. So thank you very much.
We do have, I know, additional council comments, but I've just been handed a card. This, just so we're clear, I'm going to accept this card, but if there's any other public that wants to speak on this, this is your, your last opportunity. But we'll go ahead and hear from Mr. Gene Defoe. Mr. Defoe, come forward for three minutes, and then we'll continue the council discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This utility rate increase is amazingly unfair. And I have been, I recently addressed a letter to the Council on this very subject. There were a number of things that were wrong with the way in which you are charging the utilities. For instance, you have the five utilities coupled with the four community activities, the Mesa Convention Center, the parks, or the, the ballparks, the stadium for, and I can't remember what the fourth one was. And those are combined together, and so that is wrong. And I would encourage the Council to look at those facts that I've placed before you. And I have not heard one word from the Council. I know that, that this is, I am not prepared to repeat all of those things, but the Council report for 2017 showed that you transferred 382 million dollars of the general obligation bonds into the enterprise fund to be paid for out of the utilities. That's wrong also. So I have, that concludes my statement.
Thank you, Gene. Additional council discussion, I don't, Mr. Heredia and then Mr. Luna.
There's a question for Mr. Brady. Clarify the previous forecast that we had as far as utility rate increases, maybe five years ago to now, and kind of the diligence of the city trying to reduce rates over the years.
Thank you, Councilmember, yeah, Mayor and Councilmember. So probably four or five years ago, when we were projecting the rates for this year that is in front of Council today, we knew back then that we were going to be adding on new treatment plants, water treatment plants, we knew we were going to be incurring significant amount of debt. And, and I should say, I want, I don't want to neglect the other parts of our community. We also invest millions of dollars every year replacing pipes throughout the city to maintain our infrastructure to provide those services. We find it's much cheaper to be proactive in our infrastructure replacement program than to wait until there's an emergency and a pipe bust. So back then, anticipating the debt that we were going to be, the opportunity to sell bonds in 2014, we had a projected, I think in 5 and 6% increases for this year that you're considering. And those, each year, we evaluate as we get closer to that fifth year in that schedule, as we get closer to 17, we would evaluate. I think we were able to adjust that down to about 4%. We had 3.5% a year ago when we were approving the rates for the, for the, this current year, we looked at rates that would said this, for this coming year today would be 3.5%. So every year, we evaluate the progress and we look at costs, try to reduce our costs, try to reduce our financing costs. Sometimes we're able to do that through refinancing. But we're also very successful at selling water. We've been very successful with some very large manufacturing companies and obviously tremendous residential growth that has brought additional revenues to us. So a lot, most of the increase today is really just focused on that small increment, the incremental cost of debt service that we're seeing to pay off these large plants.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Brady. You know, my philosophy is pay a little now than to pay later. You know, as we, as I see the east part of the town, I represent District 5, there's tremendous growth there. And we have to be responsible in terms of ensuring that we have the correct infrastructure on the east side of town. We have a water treatment plant, we have one in northeast Mesa, we have a large one in southeast Mesa. It would be irresponsible to not consider paying into that. So I'm going to be supporting the rate increase. I think we, as a council, decided, you know, it was initially presented at 3.5. Now it's going to, we've decided as council that it should be at 2.0. So I'm going to go ahead and support the rate increase, because I think it's the responsible thing to do.
Thank you. Counsel, any additional comments? Mr. Thompson?
Chris, if, if you look at our utility rates and what's in our reserve fund, and how much money the utility, the enterprise brings in, after we shift 100 million over to the general fund for, for the public safety piece and the libraries and so forth, how much is left in, in the enterprise fund to, and is what is left, even if you, if you did a, if you did a zero increase, is what's left enough to pay the debt service today? Or, or would we be in, over our heads? Or would we be upside down?
Okay, so generally speaking, this fund generates about $400 million in revenues. I think I'm pretty close, I'm rounding. $400 million in revenues coming into the enterprise. 100 million of that, over 100 million of that, is because we don't have a primary tax. And since in the 1940s, the city of Mesa has transferred dollars out of the enterprise fund back to the general fund to pay for general operations of the city. We don't have a primary property tax. We transfer 100 million dollars out of the enterprise fund to pay for public safety. In addition to other enterprises, enterprise-related activities, they're also funded out of the enterprise, some which contribute with lease revenues and concessions revenues. If the question is, after taking 100 million dollars out, we're left with 300 million dollars, what that, it doesn't really change the, the cost, the dynamics of the cost of debt. The debt's still going to continue to grow on the schedule with these new plants coming on, and the full cost of that debt now being impacted on our schedule. So it doesn't, I don't know that, I mean, we could say, well, let's not do a rate increase, but it's still going to hit the same thing that Councilman Freeman said. It's, we're still going to have to pay for it somehow, and those increases aren't going to stop happening. So if we choose to not do an increase this year, it just means next year, somebody's passing the buck to another council. And unfortunately, we've tried very hard, when there are increases to our ratepayers, to keep them very minor and small and smooth over a period of time, so they're not having to have these big spikes. Because we recognize the difficulty on fixed incomes to plan for these increases. So our preference is not to have one year of no rate increases, and the next year, it's 3%, 4%, 5%. So we, it can be done. Certainly, we can do it in one year. It's not sustainable. But it, it sets up for a large increase in the future. And that's, that's the challenge we have.
Well, could we do something more than zero, but less than two? I guess what I'm trying to get to is.
Again, we, we tried to set to, we set the two, and we showed you the forecast, trying to maintain reserve balances, knowing what we know today. What I, it's easier for me to say is, today, this is what we know, looking forward to the forecast, 2% positions us financially very well. But again, next year, we have, you know, council can look at that increase, and maybe it can be adjusted, depending on the levels of activity. We just sent out the third quarter report for all the city's funds, and the enterprise fund is doing well. It continues to perform very well on revenues and expenses. And so with that trend were to continue, we may have the opportunity next year to look at having smaller increases than we anticipate today. But again, it's a, it's a policy decision about, if you reduce it too much, you got, you have to make up for it, because the debt schedule is not changing. It's, we can't reduce it. And that, and that's, that's the concern we have. But that's up to the council, how you want to manage smoother rates at a smaller amount over a longer period of time, or reduce it more today, but it means you're going to have to make up for it at some point in the near future.
I have one question. So, Mr. Brady, with that said, you mentioned the forecast of a possible rate increase next year. If we do 2% this year, what was the forecast for next year, and even subsequent years?
I'm going to have Candace help me out, because I'm, I'm shooting for too much from the hip, and she's squirming over there, so I need to get the real number.
He's doing very good.
She's still nodding. Okay, good.
So the, the, what we had before you, the latest, and again, when we came to council, there was many different scenarios that was asked of us. And so what the council kind of settled on, or at least gave us direction on, was Scenario C. And so if anyone has seen any of the past items, that's the scenario that I am talking about, and has gone out, it is public out on the website. So Scenario C has the recommendation for the 1819 forecast to be a 2% increase on water and a 2.5% on wastewater. I'm going to use those as my examples going through. Going to the forecast forward, it would be a 3.85% on water in the remaining years, and on wastewater would be a 4.35%. Again, that is based on the information that we know today, does not take into consideration any additional growth, or additional infrastructure and so forth, buildings and so forth like that. So in the forecast, we put all of our expenses that we know, that would be our debt service, increases in our operations. So for example, we gave the example for water, the increased just cost in water for next year is 1.2 million dollars. Also, we have an increased cost in chemicals. So all of that is kind of forecasted over the time period, as well as just kind of a normal growth pattern. So we try to be very conservative in our forecast. The hope is that next year, we would come back, instead of having a 3.85% increase on water, it would be lower, hopefully, because we've had better growth, or better revenues, maybe less expenses, maybe the, the quality of the water is better than we think it's going to be next year. We don't need as many chemicals, all those types of things. So that would be the hope right now.
But if we reduce the amount today, we have to make up for it in the future, because most of this is being driven by those costs that aren't going to change, as well as costs and debt. So we can make the change, we can lower it, but those 3.8s, it's going to be harder to keep those down in the future. Well, and we're going to try every year. We come to council, you're only approving one year. We give you a forecast, just to give a sense of impact of what happens when you make decisions today. But again, we, we can adjust it. But again, it does have impacts on the out years. But that 3.8% is kind of like last year, we said it was 3.5% for this year, and we were able to adjust it down.
And the goal of the forecast, as we look out, is, is not to, and to get kind of, Councilmember Thompson, to get to your question about, can we cover the bills for one year? We could cover the bills for one year, but the problem is that puts more pressure on all the subsequent years. And the goal that we have is to actually be five years out to be, to be sustainable, to make sure that we are doing incremental changes, so that our ratepayers and our, so our customers have that time to adjust and to look at conservation, if that's, if that's an option for them, or the types of things. And we also hope that by the time we get five years out, we won't need as much. And as we looked at it before, just a few years ago, we thought this year was going to be a 5%, if you look at forecasts from three years ago. But with all of the refinancing we've done with our existing bonds, with all of the savings that we look for all the time, trying to do energy conservation at our plants, changing over to LED lighting, changing our different energy uses, every day, we're looking for ways to reduce our expenses, to hope to not have those high adjustments in the future.
Thank you. Counsel, additional comments? Mr. Whitaker?
I just want to say one last thing. The way that you reduce your rates is you reduce your expenditures, right? So if you have less expenditures, you don't have to raise your rates as much, because you don't have as big of bills to pay. So to the point that if we're going to lower rates this year, you're, everybody's absolutely right. It's just going to force us to raise the rates over the next four years, which we have to project on a five-year basis. But to the point of, what is the projected cost of the ASU building with that service?
Mayor and council, we will be presenting that number to you, I think in a couple of weeks, we indicated we would be bringing that forward to you.
I'm just curious what the estimated one is up to this point.
It can be anywhere between 60 and 65. I don't know.
For the construction cost, or the entire debt service payment?
The construction cost, because until we sell the bonds, I can't, I don't know what, I can't tell you what the interest rate's going to be. But the, when most people ask, what is the cost of a building, it's usually the principal amount. And so it's somewhere between, we think it's close to 60 to 65 million right now.
But that's not relevant for the conversation. The conversation we're having is, what's the burden on the utility ratepayer? Sure, I get that the construction cost is $75 million, but all the projections that staff is.
60.
Okay, 60 to 75?
No. I don't know where 70 is coming from. Anybody repeats 70 again, it's fake news. I don't know where that is.
Okay. So the cost is $60 million, and we're not talking about construction costs. It's not relevant in this part of the conversation. What's relevant is what is the total cost that the taxpayer is going to have to pay? Well, the taxpayer has to pay principal and interest. They don't get to decide just to pay the $60 million interest payment. And all the stuff that staff has provided me has shown that the estimated sales for the bonds are around 5%. And while we're not asking for exact numbers today, we are asking for budgeted numbers. So if you take $60 million and you assume a 5% interest rate over 20 years, it's no longer $60 million. And that's my only point. You, you can only reduce utility rates and water rates by reducing your expenditures. It's just math.
Mr. Heredia?
I think we had also, it's important to look at the cost, but also the, the revenue that's come in, right? Last study session, we had Mr. McVay talk about the utility revenue direct that City of Mesa will get. And that was over 7 million, 7.4 million each year. You times that by 20, because my colleague is compounding the same, that's over $149 million of direct revenue that's coming into this city. So I also want to, you know, make sure that we look at the bigger picture, not just on, on costs, and how much the, it's important to make sure that we're, we're doing our due diligence there, but also how this affects. This doesn't affect only in one thing, but it affects also in incoming revenue. So I, I think this has been, the utility debate has been unfortunate, because they, my colleague has used it as a, as a, as a, as a way that we're talking about ASU. So I, I think the important comment that was made, to separate these two, is important to understand what, how it is affected, because all these things have a much more comprehensive effect on each other. Again, important to look at costs, but also the bigger picture of, of how these direct revenues will be coming in, as it was, you know, forecasted in our previous study session, of, you know, over, you know, $30 million of direct utility revenue that we will have in, by doing this. So that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to make some closing comments, and then we'll close the public hearing. I, Mr. Glover, I don't want to skip over you if you have any comments.
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I think it is unfortunate that this discussion has been hijacked by a red herring issue, which is the ASU issue. And we, I think we, I'd hoped that we'd thoroughly debunked this a week ago Thursday, when we had a few hours of conversation about this, and multiple witnesses that come in with charts and graphs and economic impact studies. But so, and I, I don't want to continue that conversation, other than to say that I think that, for anyone who wants to get into the details of that conversation, I'd encourage you to watch the council meeting of a week ago Thursday. Because there, I, I think that that helped him clear up some of the confusion about this. Mr. Defoe, you asked a question earlier about the fact that we had transferred about 300 or 400 million dollars' worth of debt into the enterprise fund, into the utility system.
352 million of general obligation.
Thank you. You're almost right. It was not, Candace, I was about to tell you what I thought that was. But Candace, what do you think that he's referring to?
Well, Mayor and council, I'm not quite sure, not knowing where the number comes from, but I can tell you that we have not transferred any general obligation debt into the enterprise fund. That's not how the general obligation debt is paid. All of our general obligation debt is paid from a secondary property tax. We also have some impact fees that go into that, as long as a court construction fee. And those are the three payment, payments that we have that go into the general obligation debt.
Mr. Defoe, here's what I think you were, may have been referring to. We have issued maybe $300 million in bond debt out of utility tied to utility rates. And that's because in 2014, our voters approved nearly half a billion dollars in, in utility bonds to pay for a brand-new water treatment plan and a brand, a brand-new wastewater treatment plant. That, at that time, is when staff said, in response to this mandate from the voters, to have a robust utility system, we need to pay that, that bond debt, so we ought to expect there's going to be some utility rate increases over the next few years. So that's, that's the, the situation that we find ourselves in. So now, staff has been, as you know, in leading, as a result of that, additional bond debt, estimating that we need, we're needing a bank utility rate increases higher than what we proposed. The good news is that the economy has been doing very well, the, the sale of utilities has been doing well, and so, and, and our general fund balance is doing well. So we don't have to increase rates at, at the rate that we thought we would need to, to pay off that bond debt, to build this water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant. Now, I think, so, yes, we probably could get by with, with, by freezing rates this year, but that would put us really out on a branch. And, and it really increases the likelihood that we would have a spike in rate increases in, in future years. As Mr. Brady indicated, the good news is that the economy continues to be doing very well. And so I think next year, when we're having this meeting, I think there's going to be a very good chance that we will be, have, be able to have a more serious discussion about freezing rates and/or adopting just a minimal COLA-type increase to, in spite of the debt that we have, to build those two very large facilities. So for, and again, this, this has been debated many different ways. We're going to, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Items 11B through 11F? That motion has been made by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your votes. Mr. Glover, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes 4 to 3, with council's member, council members Thompson, Whitaker, and Glover voting nay. The next item on our agenda is Agenda Item 12A, and that's to conduct a public hearing on the proposed five-year capital improvement program. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Goodwin, have we had any requests to speak on this item? Okay. And given the cards that came forward earlier, I do not have any requests to speak on this item. Is anyone in the audience expecting to speak on this item? Okay. Do any council members wish to address this item? I declare the public hearing closed. Next item, 11B, is the resolution approving the five-year capital improvement program. Is there a motion and a second? Thank you. Mr. Luna has made a motion for second.
Toby.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I misspeak? This is Agenda Item 12B. And this is the resolution approving the five-year capital improvement program. I'm sorry if I misspoke. And that we have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item 12B. Please cast your vote. Mr. Glover, how do you, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. The next item that we have is Agenda Item 13A, and that's to take action on the tentative adoption of the proposed fiscal year budget for 2018 and 19. Ms. Goodwin, have you received any blue cards to speak on this? Previously, you handed me two blue cards on that. So I'll invite these folks forward. Mr. Gene Defoe, welcome back. Mr. Defoe, we're going to start your three minutes in a little bit.
I defer to my friend Vern.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next card we have is from Mr. Verl Farnsworth. Welcome, Mr. Farnsworth. You have three minutes.
Verl Farnsworth, 3543 North San Gabriel Circle, Mesa. I want to make it clear, I'm not anti-ASU, and I'm not anti-higher education, but I am absolutely anti-this ASU project. I find it appalling, the lack of respect paid to the voter's decision in your study session, May 10. In relation to whether or not the voters rejected both the sales tax increase and the projects, projects listed in Q1, Mayor Giles, your response was, "There is nothing inconsistent here with this conversation and the ideas we are discussing here and what the voters said. Have you surveyed the 81,933 no votes? Have you asked them why they voted no? What and where are the results? When the voters rejected question one, they rejected everything in question one, not half, but the whole thing." half, but the whole thing. For myself and everyone that I have talked to since the February twenty-sixth council meeting, we voted against the question because of the prospect of the ASU building." Eighty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three votes were cast against question one. Voters rejected question one completely, not just half. An article in the Arizona Builders Exchange posted on November the eleventh after the election said the headlines, "Mesa Voters Nick's Funding New ASU Campus." I would imagine that if I researched and cataloged every press release, we would find that all of them mentioned that the ASU project was rejected by the voters. To spend even one red cent on this ASU project would be a violation of the public trust and a tax increase to the citizens of Mesa. Why is there no parking included in the plans to construct this building? There originally were. The city code requires at least six hundred parking spaces for this project. If those parking units are not part of this agreement, then ASU will be, will not be paying their fair share. And there will eventually be a tax increase to the citizens of Mesa. If all standards permitted, permitting fees are not included, then that omission would constitute a tax increase also. If the City of Mesa can propose to build this building now without a tax increase, where did the money come from? What is being neglected? And why didn't you build it in two thousand sixteen? If this project would be the anchor to downtown, downtown you described, why since November sixteenth has not your group of developers taken the project on and run with it? Why are they and you saying they will come if we, the citizens of Mesa, build this building? Why since November two thousand sixteen are there still only three of these golden apple facilities across the country? Why has not a single new one been built since then? In the May tenth meeting, which you have referred to and asked us all to look at, Mayor, Mr. Brady had this to say. We don't go into these deals thinking of making a profit. We are not a profit-motivated organization. I guess the citizens' money is not worth the same as some private developer.
Mr. Farnsworth, your time is up. Can you wrap it up, please?
If you think this is such a good project, I'm asking what was asked earlier. Put this on the ballot. Let the citizens of Mesa decide. If not, I suggest that we might have to find a neutral arbitrator to clarify the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Thank you. Please come forward. Can you give us your name for the record and you'll have three minutes to speak?
I'm Tyler Montague. I live at five thirty-four North Orange Street. It's an interesting question on whether or not the voters have already rejected the ASU proposal. And it's a question I've had myself. And some activists had the question and brought it to me. And I think it is a fair question. And there is one point of logic that you could ask yourself. It's math. If Proposal A is equal to Proposal B, then rejection of A, we can reasonably infer is rejection of B. However, these, the question one is different than the current ASU proposal. That one involved a sales tax and a public safety component and a different expenditure on the ASU thing. So, they're not the same, but it's still a reasonable question to ask. These activists asked me and through an organization, the Public Integrity Alliance, which I am the president of, we granted twenty-five hundred dollars for an extensive study by some professional survey company that did four hundred and ninety-nine sample poll. Nearly a hundred of those were live interview polls and the rest was an automated poll and which they're exposed to questions, to the facts about the plan and statements in favor and against, including it was already rejected, and some of the stronger comments I've heard in debate. The result was that sixty-one percent of respondents favored the ASU plan. Twenty-three were against, with the remaining respondents being undecided. So, according to the poll, which had a four-point-nine percent margin of error, the voters do support the ASU project. So, it is not accurate, using the science of the polling, to say that this has already been rejected, the voters don't want this. So, I would just submit that, that item. And I'm open to any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Montague. Thank you. Counsel, any discussion on this item? This is, this agenda item is the budget, correct? Yes?
So, I won't be voting for the budget, the tentative budget today, and I have eight reasons. The first reason is going back to what I stated earlier, as it pertains to the ASU building, that water is a basic right for citizens. And when you start to compound this over a ten-year period, or even the life, if you go back to nineteen seventy at four-point-two percent, it's not fair, actually, to the middle class. It's not fair to the people who work hard to pay their bills every day, to have to deal with a four percent compounding interest on their water bills. The second reason is the amortization of the PSPRS that we did earlier this year from twenty to twenty-five years. And my question would be, if we can pay one hundred and twenty million dollars for an ASU building, then why didn't we push this out five more years? We should be using that money for the ASU building to pay down our debts. Instead, we just choose to further amortize our debts longer. The third reason is the budget's not balanced. Our net uses exceed our net sources. The fourth reason is there's a short-term vision of only caring about how we pay for and budget for the next five years. There's lack of a long-term vision. This is coming to light as our debt service payments are about to consume twenty-five percent of our budget. And now, earlier, in a few weeks ago, we had to vote to increase our sales tax by fourteen percent just to support our core city services. The fifth reason is the metrics for determining the city's financial health are sales tax and utility rates. Given that we have to increase both this year, I would assume that we're not doing a good job. The sixth reason is through our CDBG funds, we're subsidizing millionaires to remodel the front of their commercial buildings. It's policies like this that help fuel the wealth disparity between the rich and poor, one of the biggest issues facing our country. The seventh reason is the ASU building. I won't go into more detail. And the last reason is GFOA recommends a sixteen percent reserve balance and we maintain eight. So, with these eight reasons, I'll be voting against the tentative budget.
I'm gonna look and choose, Mr. Brady, what is our reserve fund balance?
For this coming year?
Yes.
In the general fund?
If we adopt this budget, what will our projected reserve balance be?
What, twenty-something? Seventeen-point-one percent for this year.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I'm talking about the five-year forecast where it draws down to eight percent. I hear what you're saying.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Mr. Brady, just want to clarify, the CDBG budget, doesn't that fund our social service programs, not our, not millionaires?
There, yes, there's eligibility under HUD requirements that, and that's a separate, I mean, yes, it does. It's HUD-required, that provides for benefits for low-to-modered-income individuals.
So, we're talking about Macy United Way, and New Leaf, Save the Family?
I believe the council member Whitaker is referring to the facade improvements, which is going to redevelop buildings in the downtown area that are, that are eligible for CDBG dollars.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. CGP, CGTB does not fund for millionaires.
Counsel, additional comments? The only thing I would, I think my comments would be very similar to what I said earlier. I had hoped that we had debunked the red herring arguments about ASU having an impact on our budget. In fact, the opposite is true. That's what all of the reports that we saw indicated. And let me just add to that, the way that we take pressure off of our ratepayers is to take advantage of the investments that have been made in our downtown, the Light Rail, the Performing Arts Center, this very attractive downtown environment that we have, that is not performing as well as it should. We have tracts of twenty acres here, fifteen acres there, that should be full of buildings with spinning electric meters and water customers. And we already have the infrastructure developed. We are, the way to take the pressure off of ratepayers is to add ratepayers in our downtown area. That's what building an innovation district in our downtown is going to do. It's going to have a net reducing of, it's gonna take pressure off of the ratepayers. So, I see irony in the argument that that's, that it's gonna have the opposite effect. Also, with regard to question one, this was a sales tax increase. The voters told us they don't want us to increase their sales tax. And the reason that all of the, the items that were listed on question one included public safety, open spaces, economic development projects, I would suggest to you that to interpret that vote as a mandate against hiring police officers and firefighters and doing economic development projects is not what that vote was about. It was about rejecting a sales tax increase. So, I see no inconsistencies there. That being the case, is there a motion to approve this item? I'm sorry? Sure.
I, I'll support the budget tonight, but I think Councilmember Whitaker brings up some good questions. I think, starting tomorrow, we should look at how we put our budget together. I think we need to look at that long-term forecast. Most corporations, most business entities look at that long-term forecast. They don't look at the next five years or the next three years and, or to this year. They look at the long-term forecast and what, what their debt is versus their revenue. And I think we should start shifting in that, towards that mode, to make sure that we have a balanced, a balanced budget every year. So, I'll support the budget this year, but I look forward to having some discussions about perhaps changing how we fund our budget and, or how we look at our budget in the future to ensure that we have a balanced budget, that our revenues and our expenses are, are parallel.
Thank you. And a motion would be appropriate? Mr. Freeman has made a motion, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please cast your vote. Mr. Glover, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes six in favor with Mr. Whitaker voting nay. The next item on our agenda is item fourteen, items from citizens present. I do have a few cards. Ms. Goodwin, do we have any additional cards? Okay, we'll go with these three then. We'll hear first from Mr. Steve Hessler. Welcome, Mr. Hessler, you have three minutes.
Steve Hessler, fourteen thirty-six West Jerome. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. From my emails with council and staff, you know I'm a numbers person. Tonight, I'm not gonna bore you with numbers, since many of you seem to think you're visionaries and maybe beyond that. Besides, numbers rely on credibility, a credibility that can be undermined by conflicts of interest. It's a paradox that for all the fascination with bringing higher ed to downtown Mesa, the critical thinking one would associate with higher ed seems to be lacking in this analysis, when it gets in the way of an agenda. Maybe this is why council is excited about a school that can create narratives and artificial realities, a school that can teach three D graphical representation of large data sets, while council doesn't question a two-dimensional bar graph that fails to project debt because excludes the basic assumption that the city will sell more debt in the future. If ASU is not an investment, it's an expense. If it is an investment, don't ignore the most basic metric, return on investment, and replace it with a sprinkling of economic development fairy dust. Instead, we're told that the last economic development project was good, but the next one will be really, really good. A photograph implies a correlation between the downtown Phoenix campus and surrounding real estate development. We don't know what the correlation is, can't prove it, ignore the correlation, doesn't cause causation. A better correlation might be found between the downtown Mesa campus and campaign contributions from real estate developers and consultants, many from out of town. An even stronger correlation may come in the form of two sitting councilmen employed by ASU approving of the ASU project. One councilman teaches a course in ethics, which hopefully would address conflicts of interest, another course in leadership. Would those students view this leadership on this council as a positive model or an example of what not to do? So, teachers, some of us do listen in class and expect critical thinking, ethics, and respect for your customers to move from the classroom into the real world. Maybe it's not about education. I'm not an attorney, but question why council would pursue a nonessential project with potential conflicts which may not survive further legal scrutiny? We can disagree on policy. I would hope we could agree on ethics and need for transparency. Council has misled the public, and dismissing arguments to its well-crafted narratives as red herrings does nothing to restore that trust. That council is pursuing an institution of higher learning on the hope that people won't know what's going on is stunning. Why should we trust a council that doesn't trust us? Many Mesa voters don't consider themselves visionaries or don't have time to be visionaries as they try to make ends meet. They may have an interest in numbers and conflicts of interest that the council may not. I told you at the beginning that I wouldn't bore you through numbers and I kept my promise. My next step is to educate the voters on what the council isn't telling them, and I intend to keep that promise as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hessler. Next is Steve Sahamsky. Welcome, Steve. You have however many minutes?
Thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name is Steve Sahamsky. I live at thirty-two fourteen East Rochelle Street in the Lehigh Community. I believe your daughter might live there, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you for joining our community page. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for trying to get the Vulcan asphalt plant to lessen its odor. Their attempts to reduce emissions have only been partially successful because many in the community still will smell the powerful, I guess you can say, aroma coming from the asphalt plant. Where I live, I personally don't smell it that often. It comes and goes with the wind. I guess our general frustration is, I know it's a county zoning issue, not really a city one, and I guess that sort of ties your hands, but I'm hoping the city and the county and the state and our community could do something because the air doesn't recognize anybody's jurisdiction. We all breathe it. So, I thank you for your efforts. I just hope we could do some more. And thank you for letting me speak before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sahamsky. Sorry I mispronounced your name. Next is Renee Garcia.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you. My name is Renee Garcia, and you know I'm here for the Vulcan-Lehigh Crossing issue as well. You have to excuse me, I'm feeling a bit under the weather and my voice is going, so bear with me as if I'm not quite as pointed as I usually am. I just wanted to bring this into your attention again. We all know what the issues are surrounding the asphalt plant there and the noxious fumes that permeate our neighborhood. They're not healthy, they're not good. We've tried to work with Vulcan, I know personally myself, since last July. They pretty much rebuffed us until we got you folks involved. Now, we seem to have a little bit more of their ear. But about a week and a half ago, they proposed a plan that was more of a mandate on what they would and would not do to help us. And I completely reject that. I think that's unfair and rather arrogant of Vulcan. Their time has been manipulating the area for quite some time. I think that time is over. They've known for twelve years that this day would be coming. The city allowed rezoning of our area next to an asphalt plant. They said in the rezoning meetings that they were not compatible with the residential facility. And still, they mandate what they will and won't do, what they're, how they're gonna do things, how their permits should read, letters from their attorneys to the county mandating how they want their amounts of emissions to be. That's unheard of. And their time has come and gone. They need to be a good neighbor, they pretend they are and they're not. They're a bully and they're steamrolling our community. And I, for one, don't appreciate it. I don't like what they are doing and I'm pretty much really, really tired of dealing with them. We have to breathe the noxious fumes on a daily basis, twenty-four-seven. We don't have an escape from it. If we sell our homes, we have to disclose it. If we do sell our homes at all, we might have to sell them for less than what we paid for them. This is unfair. As the other gentleman said, our air that we breathe knows no city or county boundary. And Vulcan needs to be a good neighbor, a responsible business, and stop being the steamroller that they've been with us and with other communities all over the country. The state laws need to change as far as mining, and we are trying to get a meeting with Senator Flake in regard to that. Flake in regard to that. Things need to change. Those houses should have never been built there, and the zoning committee for the city made an error. The county permits are a little slack. The agreement that was made when that area was purchased with the former owners and I think whatever company owned that facility prior to Vulcan, the stipulations as far as the rezoning were very slack. They were only in regard to noise, not about the pollution that they emit. They burned used oil to heat their asphalt drums, that's what we're smelling is used oil, that comes from our car and transmission fluid. This is just wrong. And they know that it's there now, they've been out there, they've recognized it, they know the fumes are there. They're telling us what they're going to do, and that has to stop, and we have to step up. And unfortunately, there were some errors made on the part of the city, and on the part of William Lyon, and on the part of the county, but we have to do something about them now. That's all I'm asking, please, and please keep this in your sight, and we appreciate your helping us.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. That concludes the requests we have to speak. Is there a motion to, and that's our final agenda item, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, Chris.